Jim, who's second in the agenda?
Deb.
General Assurances, Grant General Assurances and New School Board Business.
New School Board Business, Grant, General Assurances. And that will be CDE. All right, anything else? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed or abstaining? Carrie's. Approval of the minutes of the March 3rd School Board Meeting? Take a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Jeremy, second. Second by Ed, any other additions, deletions? Yes?
I had a question on page 7, line 105. Sherry's name.
Yeah.
And then, I just, I don't understand what that line means, so...
Excuse us, we have transportation. We just have transportation. My Sherry asked if $1 is used as a place owner. Do we have a section in our budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was in the transportation line, there's a $1.
Just to keep it open. If it's zeroed out, we can't.
Can we just add a transportation line in there?
Yes, to be specific as to where it's at.
I just didn't have any idea what that meant.
Yep. Yes.
And then, line 113 and 114. The dibbles, I think it's abbreviated differently. It stands for dynamic.
And you said 113 and 14?
Yeah.
Oh, it's listed both twice, okay.
Yeah, and the star is another assessment name, so it... I know I'm being picky, but I'm a teacher, it needs an uppercase letter.
It's all right. Fine with me.
You and Kathy will get a lot of rate.
Nope, that's fine. Anything else? Perfect. So we say I have a motion as second to approve. All in favor? Aye, any opposed or abstaining? Yes. March 3rd non-public meeting, 69. Take a motion to approve there. Motion by Jeremy, second. By Deb, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed or abstaining? Carrie's.
Isn't Deb abstaining because she wasn't at those meetings?
Oh, you're right, I should have seen.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Both of them. I forgot. So eager.
That's all right, public comment.
Is there only one tonight?
Yes ma'am, there's only one generally average.
Okay, so I just had, and I think you're gonna go over it when you do. It was page 33. And it's the projected fund balance. So, I don't know if you're gonna go over it, or should I ask my?
You can ask your question.
Okay.
Or, we'll take it as a comment and we should be able to answer it within the discussion.
So, you know, I get all of it, and I'm trying to just understand your approach to the budget, I guess. And it's pretty, you have your revenues, your expenditures, and then it comes down to the subtotal, which is a 435. And then it says add back, so that's fiscal year '24, retain fund balance, correct? Of 164, 164,000?
Yes.
Okay, so that is June, the end of June 2024. That's what's left over from, say, last year's budget. Is that right? As the fund and funding balance of 2024, right?
That 164 is, so it's actually two numbers. There's $3,050 that was prepaid for FSA reserve that we had to. It was changed, and we didn't have a choice, I did ask that question. And then, the 161, 339 is what the school board voted to retain. It's not what was left over. But, there were other funds that were returned to the town. But, it is the prepaid amount and what the school board voted to retain.
Okay, so that's what's in, it got carried over, and you'll see that amount added to the projected fund balance?
Correct.
Because the year starts with a zero at the top.
Okay. So, I guess, my next question, because I do see the warrant article number 5 is 10,000, and number 7 is 35,000, and that was to be funded by the balance that's left over, correct? So I guess, my question is, from a budget perspective, you're really counting on having funds left over every year, right? I mean, you've had a fund balance the last several years, significant amounts, and it's okay, but... So the 10,000 was the special ed warrant article, wasn't it? And then the 35 was...
10,000 was the special ed capital reserve, yes. And the 35 was the... The building capital reserve from unreserved fund balance.
Correct. So I guess my concern is that, if you need this money, you're sort of gambling that it's gonna be left over. Right? So why wouldn't you just budget for it? And I understand, I mean, because if you're looking at a surplus here, you're looking right now at close to $600,000, right? Well, no, you're taking out the 10 and the 35. I guess what I'm saying is, why do we end up with so much money left over? And I understand you use it on these two warrant articles, but if you're budgeting, a budget is a budget, and I need X amount of dollars for this, I need X amount of dollars for that. So, you really are relying on funds being left over.
To fund those warrant articles, yes, we are relying on those. And that's why, and that's why we put them up there that way, saying that, you know, if, if all goes well and we have a fund balance, there have been years that we were $70,000 fund balance, or 50,000.
Right.
Then those would not be funded, or they'd be funded in the order up to what we've asked for. But like the special ed capital reserve that we did this year, I think we have 200 and something thousand dollars.
You felt it was adequate.
Right. So we felt that if that didn't pass, we'd be okay, but we'd like to have some more in there because of the cost of an autodiscipline.
No, I get that.
So it was more for that purpose. I think, we haven't dove into this yet, to really see what these expenditures are, but I think we're going to pretty quickly here. And I think, if all of your questions are related to here...
Right now.
I'm gonna say, I'm willing to allow her to ask questions during that period.
Yes.
Specific to, because I think your questions coming up now are gonna just offset maybe after, maybe they'll be answered prior to asking.
Could be, yes.
To me, a lot of this is from the lack of required special ed this year, which was very exciting, honestly.
Absolutely.
A lot of the special ed expenses.
Yeah, we really anticipated having a special ed, and they were able to do it in-house with the contractor.
Oh, and that's a crapshoot, I understand.
And it saved a ton of money. We went from, what, a million dollars when I started four years ago, to probably less than 200 this year potentially.
And I can also say, we budgeted so early, we had a change in placement that was gonna require transportation. It turned out we could cost share that with Tamworth. That was not finalized until after the budgets were through.
And again, I'm just trying to figure out your approach to the budget, because now I'm on the budget committee.
Welcome.
And, I'm just trying to, you know, if you're relying on funds being left over, I kinda don't like that approach.
No, I'd rather budget, I'd rather budget for the funds that we need.
Right. Okay. All right, that's...
Anything else in the rest of the agenda that you may have a comment about?
Well, I don't know if you can do this, it was just brought up that you now have seven paras. This past year, we've had five, right? Because one was with the early intervention, or early childhood. Anyway, my point being is, we don't have any more students, but we have seven paras. That's an additional of 1. something. And can anybody explain to me why we need more paraprofessionals?
Why we need more?
Well, you're, this current year, you have the same number of students, and you have five paraprofessionals. For Madison Elementary.
Budgeted four, though.
Madison, all right. But you now have, for next year...
We had budgeted for them last year as well.
For seven?
That is correct. Two were being utilized.
Right.
And sold to the SAU.
1.6.
1.6.
Right.
For preschool services.
I understand that.
But they were, they were still budgeted Madison employees. And they were still budgeted for the school. When the SAU opened the preschool, we had no applicants for the preschool paraprofessionals. So Madison stepped up, and was able to make things work to sell 1.6, is that the correct number? To the SAU. In, with the understanding that the SAU was gonna have to next year. That's why at one point, we were adding two more.
I know, but didn't the SAU add paraprofessional to their budget? I mean, these paraprofessionals should be in the SAU budget.
They are. The SAU paraprofessionals are now in the SAU budget.
So why do we still have seven?
Because they were originally budgeted for in Madison. They originally, then we pulled from what we had here, and we reutilized them.
And part of the, part of the fund balance we've been talking about with special ed is that we're going to be able to continue to save money by utilizing some of these paras where there's some significant need, that we wanna keep all our students here in Madison.
Okay, I didn't have any...
You just hit her.
No, I don't have to hit, hold on. I didn't have any questions about this before, until now you just talked about it. So, so, I remember the discussion of seven paraprofessionals. And I remember that like 1.6, I guess we call it two, were used for the preschool, which is SAU.
Correct.
So, that leaves five, working within the K through six students.
5.4 last year were working within the constraints of the K6.
Okay. So next year, working in the K through six.
This year?
This year, you're, right. We're talking two budget years, that's why.
So, this coming next year, working in the K through six, is it gonna be that same 5.4?
No.
No, it's gonna be the seven.
Based on, based on student need.
Okay, so then, is it nine, because there's some people in the...
The SAU is going to hire their own?
So you're gonna hire some more?
That's correct.
So your budget will change a little bit, or you have the money in your budget, or hiring?
We've budgeted, the SAU has, the SAU's budgeted, basically had to be budgeted in two places, because we have to pay Madison for that money, but Madison has to allocate the money.
It's awful.
It's really complicated, you know, for the public to understand, like I said, I didn't have any questions until this conversation came up, and then I'm like, okay, I'm thinking bodies, how many bodies are there? So, after this year, all your paraprofessionals will come out of your budget.
That's correct.
And, and then, we will have seven, you will have two, or 1. whatever.
We'll have two, officially two was budgeted for in the SAU budget.
Right.
Yes, so it is, it is complicated the way it has to be done to make sure that everything is done the way the auditors want, and I'm not saying that's always the way that makes sense to the, you know, the layperson, Heather said, you know, say, "No, Mike," and explain it to me, you know, several times. So, but we're, the SAU 13 Board has authorized the SAU to now hire those paras. That was not, that wasn't happening before. So now the SAU can hire, it's completely separate from Madison. It's no longer kind of muddy where we're, you know, sharing people, we'll have our own SAU staff, Madison will have their own staff.
So possibly, I'm not saying this happened.
Sure.
But just so I can understand the logic. You guys had budgeted for seven because you needed seven.
Correct.
You guys were good guys, and you gave some of that to the preschool. So did anybody's services, like, nobody's services suffered because of that?
We never went into any deficit of services, is that correct?
I just, I mean...
No, I know what you're asking.
Logically, you would think, okay, well, if you're doing that, somebody who could be getting something isn't getting something.
Yes, and it took a lot of scheduling, and that credit goes out too.
And it didn't start off that way in the beginning, it was just one?
It was, so, yes, it did start off as one, and we were, we could make that work. The problem was, it wasn't enough. And quite frankly, that teacher needed some support, those students needed more than was anticipated. And Heather and Lisa Dubois both sat down and said, "We gotta be able to make this work, and make it happen with the budget that we have."
Well, I'm glad moving forward, it will be a little clearer to us in the public.
Because from a budget perspective, if you look down, even with the default, and you looked at the dollar difference, there's a significant increase, and the variance is at 66% increase for paraprofessional wages. So I guess that was my question.
How can you support that? Half of that is, there was a para listed as a regular ed para, and I zeroed that budget and moved it all down to the 1210 function, which is special ed. And it was the top of the pay scale, so it was in excess of 1,000.
So if you look at regular ed paras, that's probably down, close to that amount. Any other public comments? And again, when we get to the, to the, to the fund balance. Happy to open that up to a budget committee member. All right, any other comments? Yes?
Question? So, I would think that all your paras would be working with special ed kids, or Title I kids. There would be no need for regular ed paras. Is that, what, how many are, I mean, if some are getting paid regular ed, some are getting paid special ed, like, what is, what's the ratio? What do you, I mean, like...
What's the ratio as far as that goes? Well, we, you know, so, yes, they should all be working with identified students. Are there times when they're not? That's, that is, that sometimes happens, especially in our K2 setting, where the model of that is that they need some additional support based on the students that they service. So that's the short answer to your, to your question.
So just so I can understand, like, I would understand that a special ed para that's working with special ed kids might also be working with regular ed kids within her little group, whatever.
Sure.
But you're saying that in the K2, like, she would still be getting paid out of special ed budget, not of regular ed. So you're saying you do have a need for a regular ed para in the K2?
I don't know how it's budgeted for that, but that's...
I don't think that, it shouldn't be budgeted in...
In regular ed.
In regular ed.
No, I believe they're all budgeted for special ed.
Well, then, if I were a special ed parent, I would have a problem that, I mean, I guess unless you're over-servicing, I would hope you would be over-servicing your special ed kids with your paras before you're giving them to regular ed kids. But again, that's just my personal opinion, I'm just...
Thank you.
Out there. Seen them, we're gonna move on. Consent agenda. You have your principals' report, your middle school and high school principals' reports, your enrollment reports, which does include now home schooled students.
I saw that.
Capital reserve fund balance, and your capital reserve plan. Spring play is the...
Consent agenda.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I wanted to ask Sherry specifically, if that enrollment report meets your need for what you were looking for, or if it needs to be adjusted, just because it's our first time doing it that way. So I just wanna make sure it has what you were expecting or expecting for.
I looked over it, and I think it looks great, actually. I was excited to see that in there, I'm trying to find it again.
Yeah, we flip pages back and forth.
Page 20.
Page 20. What old way?
I like to break down the classrooms. But, no, this is great.
I had a question.
Okay, sorry, let me do this, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Now a question, go.
On the enrollment, so I noticed that, and this is just probably semantics, but I understand why you have the pre-K in there. I just, I just hope it doesn't confuse the public in terms of, because those are SAU...
No, those are Madison pre-K kids.
Okay.
So that's reflective of the Madison kids.
This is where it gets very confusing to me.
Do we pay, do we pay for all of them, or they pay for play?
Yeah, like, are we now gonna pay the SAU for our Madison students, or how's that gonna work?
So, the, the SAU preschool program, we're paying our portion of the SAU.
Okay.
So of the, of the program. The students that are in here, that are identified.
That's right.
They are free, call it, for their identified time. And the others are pay for play.
Okay, so, so those are our total?
All your, that 10 is just Madison residents.
Okay, and so some of them are identified, maybe, and some are pay for play. And so, okay, I just wanna, like, that's where it gets confusing for me. And then, I did notice in, I just was curious, because it says early April, the work that the students did with the author, it kinda said that we are fortunate to have the six days. I was just wondering if, if it's too early in early April to know what they did, and how, how things went for the six days?
And that was from the...
So that was from the Cliff Grant. So Ms. Natalie came and worked with students two days over three weeks, so two days, three weeks in a row, and worked with students to really tap into their personal heritage, long-term, you know, stories, basically to tell stories, but that were connected. Not everyone got to the stage, unfortunately, like, fully writing their stories, but they're working on those in the classrooms, continuing. So, when we had other, when we had Merrick Bennett come, kids did make their mini-books, and they were able to do it by the end of that residency with Natalie, they weren't, they just didn't have the time to get all that done. So that will be coming, but it wasn't done by the time that her residency ended. But I'll just say that I met with classroom teachers for a variety of reasons, we talked about this, and how fantastic her visit was as a way to inspire us to maybe tap into her in future years, just like as an artist in residency kind of thing. When they do like memoir writing and other kind of thing, because she was so captivating and engaging to all of our students and our staff, it was, it was phenomenal. It really was amazing.
Yeah, I just figured, usually that spurs a lot of excitement and creativity.
Yes, having a kid that goes here, when I first found out about it, I went back to my being grumpy that we would put kids in a position to have to think about, you know, their home life and parents, and maybe not being in a position that they would be with either their biological parents or not having a good home life. But this was actually polar opposite, it was, it was really awesome. And for my 12-year-old to be so excited and have a show and tell, you know, part to it, from what I'm hearing, it went very well.
Artefact day was like, "It's artefact day!" I mean, it was just like, it was contagious in this building, it was so amazing. Show and tell is always fun.
We'll add that to our board meetings. Sherry's first, next month. Any other questions regarding the consent agenda?
No, I don't think they voted on it, they just took it.
We haven't yet, took it for a second.
Could Ken at Middle School possibly break down their grades? Potentially for 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, what they ask for at Middle School?
I can ask.
Will we find out how many extra kids we're paying for?
72 was the last number I knew.
I was gonna say, it's like in their reports or something?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of where I saw.
I think they did it for us once.
Madison has 14 7th graders and 17 8th graders, as of the end of the year, which...
But I don't think that's what he's asking, he's asking, how many kids total does the middle school have?
Right, because they consider 6th grade Middle School.
Now.
Now.
So their total enrollment is, how much more because of 6th grade?
Right.
302 total enrollment, you want it broken down by 6th, 7th, and 8th graders.
Yeah, if they could, they've done it for us once.
That's super easy.
So the only thing on that, on this, which I do love, that this information is in here, is, it would be nice, though, to still see, you know, how many kids are in, you know, K through 2 and 3, 4.
So the last one.
Yeah.
The capital reserve fund balance sheet is in there too?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, is there an error in the building capital reserve of 100,000? Is it supposed to be 125?
100? No, this was from the last, the one that was just approved doesn't actually get deposited until December.
Okay, so that's from...
This current year, explicitly, yes. The capital reserve fund balance page 21.
Plug your ears, Heather, plug your ears.
I'm not saying, I'm just asking stupid questions.
Right. Yep, school year 25. Versus fiscal year 26.
And I didn't look at the 30 of them, so that helps.
Regarding the consent agenda. Seeing none, all in favor of moving it? Aye, any opposed or abstaining?
Just one more, and then, so the, Heather Sherwood question. So the new CID with the gym floor, is that updated in here?
It is.
Okay, so that's...
125 in for the gym floor, and then you'll see under 26, 25, 26. Spending is 167,598. And then there's a couple of things from last year that we didn't do, like the driveway ceiling, because it was just too busy. So, that's still on the project right now.
All right, but it's all updated and everything? It looked like it was, I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
Okay. I think we've already moved it, so we will continue on, but that's all right, going back is fine.
Yeah, we did.
You did, you?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yep. Spring play is the 9th through the 11th of this month. Signups for a certain day, right, the one with lunch?
Lunch is Thursday, and if you're looking, I think I put the wrong time in my principals' report, because I put a time, hey, I didn't put a time, great, because it's at 6:30. I was advertised in 6, it's really at 6:30 for the evening shows. Community lunch is Thursday at 12:30, not too late to sign up, call the office. Yeah, but we have four shows, so one Wednesday at 10, Freedom Elementary School is going to come and watch it with us.
Cool.
We have one on Thursday afternoon, Thursday night, and then Friday night. And just a reminder, it is Mrs. Blinnigan's 50th show, so it's gonna be extra special.
That's cool.
I think we have some alumni coming back and helping out. Yeah, she's got, she's got some things up her sleeve, she's pulling out this time, so...
Perfect.
So both Thursday and Friday are 6:30, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Kindergarten registration is the 15th. Spring vacation is the 21st to the 25th. Our next regular school board meeting is May 5th. Cinque de Mayo. You're hitting all the hot spots here. Show and tell, I know what it could be, please.
Careful, it's schoolgirls.
Moving on to the principals' report.
All right. So I am your representative on the Town of Madison Master Plan Steering Committee. So it is made up of a variety of different people in the Town of Madison, different stakeholder groups. So I was asked to join, they meet once a month. There probably will be some homework to do, Tia has said there will be homework to do. So what I see is, my role is a communicator back and forth. So I will come to you with any information to share, and take any information you have back. We will be doing some surveys, we'll be collecting information from our town about schools specifically. That will be our lens that we're looking through. And so my hope is, because before that came up, I was already working on planning to do some visioning of what we want to see for the school, what are some core values for the school, something that I feel like has been missing since I've been here, that's a mission statement, but not necessarily a vision. There was a strategic plan that hasn't been since I was here. So looking at trying to put some of that stuff together, it seems to work out nicely with the master plan work. So we just may get... with the master plan work, so we just may gather a little bit more information that may not needed for the master plan, but will be needed for the work that we'll do. Tia Gagnon is the one who's leading it for the master plan, I've talked with her, because she's a parent here, to take advantage of her skill set in helping us to develop that further. So, we kind of have a couple of different things going, just letting you know. As I know more, I will be giving you information, asking you for feedback. Just know that there'll be some surveys that will be done, there'll probably be some community forums that will be done. They have lots of plans to get information from folks as they start building this bigger picture for their master plan, but it's timed well for us to do some visioning for what we feel is important, because as a school board, you have some big decisions to make as you're negotiating and looking forward in your budgeting. So, to have, like, hey, this is what our vision is, this is the core principles that the Madison School District has, then I think that's valuable. So, it's valuable for us as a school community, but just greater for the town. So, that's just happening. Okay? We already talked about the play, we happened, and I was going to talk about residency, but that kind of killed. That is our last residency. We will do two more big things. We do 10 book giveaways, we'll do another book giveaway next week, but we will do an end-of-year celebration. What we've moved away from is field day, and we've been doing like IA days, so it's integrated with our theme, using all of the arts instead of just PE. This year, we're going on the road for our big day to Storyland, because, you know, it's the year of the books, so Storyland is pretty fitting, and so we have some grant money from Cliff to do that end-of-year field trip, and the PTO is funding the other remaining funds for that. And then we will have one last big finale with another author that will come. That has not been finalized yet, but they're, they're working on negotiating that. So, one more date in June, that will be a big finale for the year. Then again, just, Mrs. Blinnigan and Ms. Hayward have put in tons of hours to make this happen. It's a lot of work. They, they get a very small stipend to manage the grant, but to see the kids, you know, getting books and being excited to take home books, to see them working with authors, it's just been a phenomenal experience. It really is definitely a memory maker, so.
Questions for the principal. Moving on. Heather Sherwood, revenue reports.
We talked about some of this, I'll try to go somewhat quickly.
Yep.
On the revenue report, I started slowly, I don't think I have everything in. We historically have not budgeted revenue, but I've decided that it might be useful information as we go through these board reports. So, for instance, I had the full net assessment, or what I call the net assessment, from the town under the current appropriation, what we expect for adequacy aid, usually by October, we know that for the year, so that's in there. I'll try to make my way through. I didn't pull MS-24 to get everything. But, the two numbers highlighted in yellow will tie out to the projected fund balance when we get there.
And that's the?
I think, this is accurate, food service does not show, this is accurate for March, but March revenues are not in there. I have to have the month actually close and then give Janet enough time to go through the reports and enter the claims. So, with us being the first Monday of the month, that rarely makes it. So, March food revenues are not in there.
Okay.
And then, moving through, this was a fast and furious month of purchase orders and acquisitions. I believe we have done a good job of getting things encumbered moving forward. I'm sure there's something we've missed somewhere, we had to make some guesses. We have not yet received a bill for the ESY services, a program that was held at the high school and the middle school, yet from Conway. So, we're kind of guessing at that.
And where would those be, where would, where would those fit, sit? Like, out of district?
Out of district is where we, I would encumber it.
Okay, so right now, there's, we've got like a, and that was a, and I guess that because that was a question I had, that was $100,000 budget balance.
Yeah, I'm trying to think where. Where's my other district? Yeah, $100,000 budget balance, we have 171,000 encumbered. So, and within that number that's encumbered, that's our best guess. We did get some bills for paras. There were some things missed, I know they're looking through them, so.
And?
I would rather commit this conservatively, being that it's a fund balance through March, than, and come back with a little more money as April may go through and we actually work through some of the details than the other way around.
I, I would rather you take more out and give it back to us than not take enough. That's.
So, I, yeah. That is our approach when it comes to the encumbrances in the office.
Okay.
I don't think, unless you see anything that stands out.
There was, I had a couple.
Okay.
And, one of them was on, so page 28 of the packet, page 5 of this report itself. I just saw that speech services seem to be over a great amount, just because, is that?
Contracted speech services?
Yes. Is that?
Out of, like, the, one of the outer schools? Is that an out-of-district type service?
I would have to look, but I do believe we are providing speech services out of district. We do have a contract with someone who is providing services.
Okay.
I believe it's in-person. It is, which is nice, but.
And then, on page 31. Big lines, catch my eye, building refurbishment is over by 106, and then the line, and then the building refor-
Okay, all funding is going to come back from capital reserve fund, that was the final balance out of our local funds for the HVAC project.
Okay.
And the building refurbishment part is over that same amount we spent on the playground beyond what is budgeted.
All right, so that 110 is going to come back up from?
That shows in the fund balance.
In the fund, okay. And then, moving on, fuel oil. I know this was kind of a gas disaster.
Fuel oil or propane?
Oh, in my, now, fuel oil, I am, it looks like I have a $13,500 fund balance.
Yeah, that's really good, because we're over on propane.
Yes. But propane, we're only over 4,000.
So far.
So.
We just paid another bill.
Okay, all right.
So, it probably will balance out because of the gym.
Right, and that's what I was trying to see is, because I know we budgeted, kind of based on past history, because we hadn't had a full year with the new system over there yet.
Right.
But I know we did up the propane, but we kept the, so fuel oil may be a place that's fully budgeted right now.
Well, we're working on defaults, so we'll go through what's in the default. I know there's things I will need to move that I've highlighted already.
Okay.
So.
Special ed transportation, I think you answered that earlier with shared?
Yeah.
And then, food service transfer. Looking at the food service budget, and where that's landing, are we thinking we may need more than the 14,000?
Absolutely. And that's in the fund balance, so.
Okay. That's where my questions lie. Others?
I'm just looking at a couple of those lines on page 32. Those are just placeholders for like contracted services and equipment, maintenance.
Which page?
32.
Page 32.
Like, the dollar ones.
Oh, $1?
Yeah, I'm just looking at contracted services and.
Oh, that's because we haven't spent anything out of that line.
No, it's just, it is just a place, the whole budget is for a dollar for it.
Right, that's, right, so there's nothing encumbered or?
Yeah. Okay.
That's one of those, if we leave a dollar, in case we need to contract something out.
For that.
Pull it from another line.
For that line of account, yeah.
Correct.
We've moved a lot of the food service stuff to building, because it's more of a building, equipment or building, maintenance and that kind of thing, because they all just kind of go together, so.
Right, because like the propane now is all off of one tank that covers everything.
Mm-hmm. No feasible way to separate that, yeah.
Okay. Other?
Moving on to page 33, it's the fund balance. I think there was some discussion last meeting, I was not here, I think Eddie were asking what, where it ties out to on those expensive revenue report. So, on the appropriations received to date, that should, that will be in the year-to-date column on the revenue report. And then, the other revenue, maybe that's where I can see it. Is the difference between the revenue received to date, which is 6,233,302, less the appropriations received to date. So, that number, that 908 includes the special ed aid, it includes money received from the SAU. We've received some money back from Voya, which was more than we were expecting, less than 10,000 from FSA rollover funds that were forfeited. And then, so, and then the prepaid appropriations, that is the amount that was returned to offset taxes. We don't write a check to the town, turn money.
Right.
We just hold on to it and have them pay less of what a true budget is.
Right, less taxation.
So, that's all in there. And then, what I'm expecting to come in, the 110,572 due from CRF is capital reserve, that's for the HVAC. Then I have appropriations receivable, that's highlighted in yellow on the revenue report. Adequacy aid receivable is highlighted in yellow on the revenue report. Anticipated, excuse me, anticipated food service. So, that's what I think will come in for the claims for March, April, May, June, plus the vending meal contract that we have with Freedom. And then, the last item is anticipated revenue from SAU. I went through, and did my best to calculate the remaining pairs for the year, the costs for cycling through the UA's, the cost for the lease based on a square footage cost share for heating, electricity, cable, phone, and then custodial services, the meal program. There's a stipend in there for after-school program coordination and substitutes, because we do not have the people at the SAU to get through all of that. So, that comes in at 72. And then, so I will say our revenues this year will be far more than what I estimated on the MS-24, because these were all moving targets in the fall. And then expenditures to date, the 5,226,671, and, and the encumbrances to date, 2,158,221. Those should be right off of the expenditure report in the bottom line in the year-to-date and the encumbrances column. And then, the additional exposure, so this how you listed 103. So, in here are the things that I'm pretty sure, like, I have a food service transfer in at 59,000. I'm hoping that it's closer to 44, but I'm hedging that a little bit. And then, I have a few others that I've gone through that I'm expecting should be spent that have not been yet. 8,500 is one of those for, I haven't billed all of the special ed services being provided by a TAM work teacher to charter school students. And there's a couple, I'd have to go back through, I didn't put my notes with this, I apologize, I left everything in the office. But, that is what I go through. I don't have them quite encumbered, I could go through and do dummy encumbrances, so they show on the report, but no, honestly, I'd rather explain it to you rather than go through and do everything two and three times.
Yeah, so that's, that's this line, the 103,231.
Yeah, that's the 103,231.
Okay.
So, then I get down, the subtotal is between the total revenues and less the total expenditures, relating to 435. I add back the retained fund balance, that's how you do it, that's per state guidance. So, right now, we are looking at an ending fund balance of just under 600,000.
And then?
And largely driven by some cost savings in special ed that I did not anticipate, not having a full-time special ed teacher or the benefits that go with that. There's a multitude of things in there, lots of revenue I did not from the preschool.
Heather, I have a question.
Yep.
You mentioned it a little bit, but it just piqued something that I was going to ask earlier about how we bill for the IA teachers for the early childhood program? How, how does that work? Because they, they do go to library, music, and, right?
Yes.
So, I took up, I did a collective rate, I put all of their compensation together, and came up with an average rate, and then I have it. I need to go back through, the reason I haven't paid this out is I wanted to verify if it was three times a week or four times a week, and I believe it's four times a week, and I just want to make sure that's what I used in my calculation.
Twenty minutes.
But I do, for 20 minutes, so I go through and I do that rate for the number of weeks in the school year.
Okay.
It's been a lot of billing for me this year.
Will you be happy that it's going to the SAU? Does that help?
Um, that part won't go away, but this is, it's just everything was new and the pace of anything else doesn't slow down, so.
So, the UA will stay?
Yeah, but, yeah.
But the, the actual staff in the room, yes.
Right, we won't have to.
She won't have to bill from one to the other?
Yeah. Back and forth.
Back and forth, well, three times.
So, when that does get paid, it will be one more sum, it will be spread out all, well, actually, will be, will be revenue, but I can bring a breakdown of it when I go through.
That's okay, I was just curious how it was working.
Okay.
Because I didn't realize they, they did go to IA until I saw a Facebook post. Where you learn everything.
Isn't that where you learn everything nowadays? Net assessment, so?
So, that net assessment, 163,212,75 is the two and a half, which the board said they wouldn't go beyond.
Beyond.
I mean, that's certainly out for discussion, I just put it out there so you know the number. The 10,000 and 35,000 were voted, weren't articles, so those have to be funded if we have the funds, and it really looks like we're going to.
Well, and they have, they have, they, we have to fund something up to that amount.
Yeah.
So, right, we could say a dollar. I mean, I think the intent of the voter was to fund the whole thing if.
That's how I took it, so I put the full amount in.
Got it. Nope, that's fine. But yes, I think that is right, because the articles have to say up to.
That was, yeah, that was.
In case we only had $8,000.
Right.
We could fund.
Can I just have you explain a little bit, the, the whole bottom, because I'm.
Oh, we're since due from the town is.
Well, just that, so we've got the 435,000.
Yep.
As the subtotal. The 164 is what the board held over and didn't use from last year.
So, if you look above, in the very first top section, there's less prepaid, non-spendable in parentheses, 3,050. That was a prepaid FSA payment, so we'd have a reserve, 71. And then, less retained fund balance, 161,3390. I subtract those so that we start on this sheet at zero. They never left our account.
Okay.
So, when I go back through, all of those show back up in this, so the voted amounts, 50,000 is paid, weren't articles, and I've paid them, and they're, this is me, added back in, I think I already put that in the revenue. The 134,804 is shown as a prepaid appropriation. So, those are added back in, I have to add the fund balance back in. It doesn't, we don't set it aside and add to it. We only set it aside for one year, it rolls back in at the end of the year, we get a new total, which is at 599, and then the board makes decisions.
So, whatever we carry over, if we decide to carry over the two and a half again, at the end of this, at the end of next year, that has to balance out to zero again. So, like, the town has a fund that they can carry year after year after year. We have to turn it back, balance it to zero, and then start over. So, that's where that, that's that 161.
But you, you also said by law that has to go back into, or, whatever rules.
So, by law, so by DOE, I have to, I, it doesn't, it's not really set aside, it's in the fund balance. So, when I redo my reports, it's whatever our fund balance is from this year, revenue minus expenses, plus what we had held over from last year.
Okay. That's why we're at 435, going to the 16, adding the 164 to 599.
Yeah.
If we opt to keep it again at two and a half.
Right, that's what we could hold over for next budget.
That's correct.
And then, the 391, 363 is, well, would go back.
Back to offset taxes.
But, it's kind of, it's a misnomer?
But it doesn't go back.
Right.
It just, they don't bill us.
It'd be less than we would ask the town.
Okay.
And the two and a half percent is based on the taxation of the next year going ahead. It's not based on the budget.
Right, correct.
That took me like two years to figure it out.
Oh, okay.
I remember the year that we were told, it could be like 215, we approved it and then we were. then we were told, no, that can only be 135. Wait a minute.
So, it is, it is kind of based on your budget, so we have our approved default budget. When it gets to tax rate setting time, by then, we have final adequacy, hopefully, and we have final special ed aid, and, you know, it's the last, I can make changes to revenue estimates if I need to. Those go in, and those, so the whole net budget goes in, the approved budget goes in. They pull out food service transfer, they pull out, and then we subtract estimated revenue. That's what DRA calls a net assessment, and from that, I subtract adequacy aid, and then that is the true net assessment that we can calculate the set aside on.
Okay. I'll pretend I understood.
And that two and a half percent?
I will catch on.
We kept it at two and a half, but it could have been five.
So, the policy that we have, what is approved is up to five.
Up to five.
But when they gave us the language change...
To not have a town vote.
Correct.
Or to petition the...
It had to say up to 5%. We as a board at the time said, we will keep it at two and a half percent. So, that's just kind of, it's a weird thing, yes, we can keep more, but we've opted to stay within what we've said.
Have you ever given it all back?
Have we ever given it all back?
Not kept it to 1.5.
The 2.5 is fairly last eight years. Before that, it all balanced out to zero. That was the first time we could hold it two and a half. Have we ever, since then, no?
I think what was a real eye-opener was the special ed that hit us hard.
Right, it was...
Well, and I guess that's why I questioned, and I understand in your capital reserve, you've got a significant amount for your special ed. I understand that, but I guess I would be concerned, and it was only 10,000 from the fund balance, but I would think you would want to put that in your budget, not rely on a fund balance, although it seems to me you continue to have extra funds left over, so, but you could gamble and not have it.
Right, but I think the only way to, I don't know that, can we fund a capital reserve from a budget line?
Has to go to the warrant.
No, a warrant.
A warrant, right.
Right, right. So, 10,000 isn't a whole lot when you look at one special ed student that could set you back 250 or whatever.
Absolutely.
So, I appreciate that, what, I guess I'm just saying, from a budget perspective, instead of relying on money being, fund balance being, funds left over, and I guess it's just the approach, and trying to learn that.
I've only done two, so maybe I should say...
We've had years that even when that special ed capital reserve was at 100,000, and we were asking for 25, that that 25 failed.
Not often, not special ed.
No, the special ed one failed quite a few years, and that's when we said, you know, when the budget's up, it's better to try to at least grab what we can from unreserved fund balance, rather than lose it all.
No, I understand, I understand, I'm just trying to...
Right, yep, no, I under, I mean, I would rather, and I think we've, we had said year beginning when we started that, 200 to 250, and we're right about there now. The problem is, back then, 200 to 250 did a good job, now, it's still a moving target, so we're close to that 250. My thoughts were...
No, no, I'm just trying to figure out your approach, that's all.
I have, I...
Go ahead, don't...
So, when I look, I circled this, just because it seemed like a really big number, the 599, so I just, I need to understand what that, that's what we have left over? Or no?
That's what I'm projecting, that's no guarantee, that's what we have left over.
Because you still could have encumbering stuff.
We could have stuff that we completely missed, didn't know about, you know, a bill that comes really late, that just wasn't, I mean, our goal is to not have that happen and not be surprised.
I know you mentioned, like, there were a lot of things you didn't anticipate, so...
So, I would, rather than go to the 599, bring your head to the 435.
Yep.
But, and then, some of the things that I questioned, either the 100,000 dollars in special ed transportation, the 100,000 that we didn't, I mean, there's 200,000 in special ed that we didn't spend.
Is that, I'm just trying to get a sense for, is this typical, or is this kind of high at this point right now?
It's higher than usual.
Okay.
I mean, we've had years, it was a couple of years ago where they told us we were going to be, that was probably...
My first year, no. Was it your first year?
You started in here.
It was your first...
We were told that we were going to have to have a deficit appropriation, and I kept saying, no, we haven't, don't have everything, and then we ended up not needing it, but...
Anytime you have open positions, or there's big fluctuations in special ed, this stuff does happen. Luckily, it's a good problem to have, but we always want to try to budget as close as we can. It's hard when you have to budget 18 months out, and it just makes things really tough.
It's hard when you have other funds too, whether it's revenues or even grants, because, you know, like, all that COVID money for all those years, we could use and not have to tap into the operating budget, so the years that you see those really big extra, you know, fund balances, because we were able to use grant money instead. Now, that's gone, so you have less access to.
Yeah, I think a lot of it is special ed related, and then in addition to the preschool program, I mean, that's really done, and I, and that's, from a financial standpoint, that's done better than I had hoped.
And that will level off, correct, I mean, this is, going into next year, you're going to be sort of leveled off.
We'll know what we, we should know roughly what we're getting from the SAU for that, so it will become less unanticipated revenue, more anticipated.
I do have preschool, an amount of revenue from the preschool program in estimated revenues, that was in the annual report.
Got it. The revenue will go down from the preschool too, if we're not supplying pairs.
Correct.
Yes.
Right, well, we're not supplying those anymore, yes.
So, this is, I just thought of this question, this is about the preschool or the early intervention, so it's a little off, do you want, can I ask it?
Go for it.
So, I'm assuming that the OT and the PT are SAU hired?
They are also part of that administrative fee that the SAU pays.
Stop. OT is a contracted service, so she bills directly to the ECE for it, and we don't have a PT right now.
Okay, so...
But yes, but...
But for speech, yes, so speech we do bill.
Yes, it's part of that.
I wanted to ask, I'm assuming that they were contract, you know, sometimes you share them between the three, but I know we have a speech person here.
Yes.
Is she able to cover the preschool, and so it just comes out of the Madison, but, you know, or is that, does that go back and forth too?
Yeah, there's two, there's two, kind of two-pronged approach. One is if those students are identified and receive speech services, so that's one shape, and then there's a push-in shape that she sometimes is able to push in to offer that, you know, proactive approach, so that's part of that $10,000 administrative fee, and then the other portion is if it's a special ed student, a Madison special ed student, it's out of your budget.
But if it's a TAMOR special ed student...
Right, that's what I'm asking.
They're getting billed for that time.
Correct, it goes to Freedom.
But our person does it, the service.
Yes, yes.
So, then, is she, I guess my question is, is within her salary for working here at Madison Elementary, is she able to cut, you know, I think numbers and all that. Is she able to cover that within her salary, and does she need to, she can, she can get that covered during her workday, under her normal Madison Elementary School salary?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Heather?
Then, moving on, if we're good on fund balance, I can't stress enough, it's projected as of March 31st, it's going to change.
It's a moving target.
Yes. Default budget, so honestly, my two notes, Jim, you hit on, I know propane is underbudgeted for next year, hopefully, fuel oil is, one, I can get an equivalent price to what we have this year when I send it out to bid, but two, that there's enough there to cover the propane. And then, the bigger concern for me is in the default, the food service transfer is at 14, and I know we're going to be doing that. So, this doesn't have to be a right now, but I'm just, I will be looking to move funds from somewhere.
Okay. Other thoughts inside of here?
So, I got a, I guess a procedural question. The middle school and high school tuition, if we go default budget, is that the same as we got this year, or how is that?
No, that's the same as, because that's contract, so they gave us a number, which we put in our budget, which also moved over, it's the exact same number that was in our operating budget, is in the default.
This year?
No, what we put on the ballot.
Okay.
So, that number gets flowed as a contracted service, because we knew it was going to be a million dollars. A million dollars goes in default and in operating budget, so that's...
So, yeah, the middle school tuition is the same default or proposed, the bus contract is the same default or proposed, the health insurance was increased in the default and proposed, the CBA, I did not even pull into this, that takes a lot of time for me to break it all apart and get it into the right line, but that is separate, and it passed, so that will be added to the defaults. And the same with the SAU budget, it's a separate warrant, it's not in here yet either.
Did that into your budget?
Yeah, I, it's the same thing, budget, and I'm thinking now versus even now, I, yeah.
Right.
I was thinking, oh, we might possibly save money, but that's not going to happen.
Not here, we live in two different years.
Right.
Any other suggestions in here to, that we can alter to meet?
So, the vacant charter school para is currently contracted? It's in this budget? Not personally?
It's being provided by a contracted service, yes, we're paying a company to provide that para.
We pay them every month, every two weeks.
So, I'd say you know what you have. Let us know how we can make it in it.
That's obnoxious, that's not how we've...
What's that?
We're looking at the equipment lines, it's just not how default has been before, so...
Yeah, there've been changes to the default.
Yes.
Okay.
Laws, as far as the RSA goes.
So, you're telling Luke he has no money in computer equipment, then?
I'll tell him. Right, because that was, that was a line I was thinking, the equipment and the upgrades.
Yeah, that's significant.
Right. Computer equipment, that we had for new stuff.
I guess I missed it, when did you guys do that?
Well, we put it in the budget, but it, because we put it in the budget, doesn't mean it did not go into the default budget, because it was an anticipated change.
Because of, we had to go back to the default?
No, when they set the default budget. So, when the default budget was set, it has to be set for the RSA, which is the current year's expenditures, plus or minus any contractual changes, and where those were new equipment purchases, they don't get put into the default budget.
They call out the one-time, they consider them one-time expenditures.
Got it.
One time that you do every five years, but that's...
Did we close it out, or do we still have money in the...
It's at 4,000-ish in the tech...
Which has been significant for quite some time, if needed. Okay. Other thoughts or concerns here, or I can just have it as rolling?
And have it as a discussion as we go.
Yep.
Well, and then I would just ask you to consider if we use some of our fund balance to buy some things that we've lost, right? So, we were budgeting for building equipment, so I have a floor scrubber and a wetback that we need.
And I know Luke's budget, it was endpoint protection and some other things that are also kind of high on those.
Can we, so, May is fine, so we've made you, if you could bring maybe those lists back to us, if that, for May, to look at, and that way, we can kind of let everybody know what our thought is, or the thoughts are, if we are to use any of that.
If we need endpoint protection, we took that away, that's kind of concerning, I don't know what you're saying.
It's not that we don't have any, but...
It's additional.
I think is how Luke presented it to us.
Question. All right. So, if you could get that list from Luke, Heather, just kind of, everything, we can look and see what may be encompassed inside of that. Thank you. CIP, capital improvement projects.
So, Genselar?
Yes.
The RFPs are out to at least four now, with hopefully a walkthrough, well, a planned walkthrough on this, a week, wait, what's the name, Monday, a week from Wednesday at 8:00 AM, and then the plan is to have the bids due on the 5th. By, before the board meeting, so we can review them at that party. Help me to get, they're out, there's people interested, I hope we get one then.
And the bids looking for somebody to take on, manage, and take...
Be the general contractor, if they don't install it, they need to find somebody that is and warranty their work, so. And then, I'm gearing up for several others, Freedom is also having their driveway sealed in stripes, so I have a new company that reached out, I'm going to send them an RFP for that, and then I need to work with Ken and Heather and just find out what we need to put on the RFP for the bathroom, section one, and then the kind of room, revamp this on the three-year cycle.
I think the library carpet.
Library carpet.
Yeah, in the hallway, yeah, there's several things, I did ask Ken to prioritize the projects, because there's so many projects, I don't know that time-wise, we can get them all done in the time frame that we have.
Can I add a potential project?
You can try.
I just noticed as I walked in the front door tonight, the grout in the front row of tiles.
I noticed this thing.
When you step onto it, it kind of echoes, which means it's getting hollow underneath, so I think a bit of preventative maintenance might help there, to get something, I think the rug was pushed back just far enough that I noticed it, so.
Just slide the rug back.
Problem solved. Thank you. Knew I had a fixer in the room.
Saved a ton of money.
All right. Any other questions relating to CIP projects?
I was just wondering, you probably can't tell yet, because you're just putting out to bid, but is this going to have an impact on any of the summer programming with the gym being?
If, and it's a big if, we get somebody enough, award a bid, and they can do the work in the gym this summer, that does vacate the gym two to three weeks. So, I don't think extended school year or enrichment really does gym time.
But rec does.
Rec does, so...
And I think last year, I think we had this conversation earlier, last year, I think rec used a couple of classrooms upstairs in place of the gym, because they were doing the HVAC project.
So, like on a rainy day, they can't...
Right, or even morning check-ins and things like that, so I think we have it still open. I think the biggest thing that we've, last year, we met the timeline for old home week. Yes. But I think, yeah, it's one of those, because they're going to need it three weeks, you said?
So, it's probably about three weeks, but then, depending on what the flooring is, some of them, they have to sit for five days to cure before anybody, so I don't know if that's part of the three-week window that we were told, or if that actually makes it four, I'm not sure, so that will be part of that process when we're trying to figure out that.
Other unknown is the demo and the slot prep, so if that goes really well, you know, that moves the timeline up.
I'm just thinking scraping those old tiles off the floor is not going to be easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just thought maybe, for courtesy, we just let them know that that's probably...
Yeah, and I think...
Basically, it's for them, kind of, the floor replacement anyway, the rec, so.
Right.
Thanks, Deb.
I shouldn't have a problem with it.
Oh, yeah, we have a rep right here, perfect, thank you.
You know. The hard thing is the driveway ceiling, I try to, I do not, that cannot happen during old home week, and it can't really happen during enrichment, so it shinks the window, it doesn't take anywhere near as long as the gym floor, so it's a fuss.
But it's also a matter, if we know the gym floor is going to get done, we want to make sure that it's done after.
The driveway ceiling is not in the same...
Well, and you also don't want heavy equipment on... Well, and you also don't want heavy equipment on it after you've done all that nice work. So it's, there's a lot of juggling of scheduling that happens.
Summer schedule gets fun at times and it gets used up fast.
It's summer short.
But I think once we have the bids back and we know, then we notify, like we did last year, which was send a letter out to the Slack man and everybody to let them know what the plans are and if they run differently, we will notify.
Good news is the rec director works here, so she's pretty much in the know.
Perfect. All right. Any other questions for Heather Shorway? Moving on. Let's say you're up, but you're up.
All right, my turn on the hot seat. Okay, here we go. So on page 52, I have the draft calendar that I'm proposing to the board for the upcoming school year. I spent some time reviewing our receiving middle school and high schools calendar in SAU nine. I talked with the building admin and the unions involved and got their feedback. So if you have any questions, I am happy to answer them. I will say, I want to, sorry, I'm just looking at it. We're going to do the same one, we're good. I did struggle with the holiday break, Christmas break.
I saw that.
So. So it is, it is a two-week break and honestly, that is something that was feedback I got from the administrators and the unions that wanted to go in that direction. We've been talking also selfishly about the gym floor and if there's potential for us to get some work done over the winter, that's an option, so.
And it could be cheaper if we.
Could be.
So if they can't do it in the summer, it could be cheaper and then we give us a little bit window time.
So you are my, in true transparency, you are the first board this calendar is going in front of. I always like to try to get that approved in Tamworth and Freedom as well because it just makes our life easier at the SAU in full transparency. And it also gives us an opportunity to collaborate during some of those teacher workshop days. So essentially, we are at 175 student days per our, and we meet all our hours as we move to hours rather than days. And I feel like this does a, you know, keeps in place our, what we've been looking for with our professional development, our parent-teacher conferences, and we do actually get out the same day Conway does. So tried to look at busing and transportation as well with that, so.
Going to hours and going to the 175 days, so there are no Blizzard bags here. So there used to be five teacher workup days, then up to five Blizzard bag days, and so going with the hours model, we eliminated the remote instruction days.
We do not do remote instruction. We do, I believe it's 960 hours at the elementary level that we are required to meet.
So do you, that means you have like real snow days?
We do. We have real snow days.
Kids can go outside and play in the snow.
We always have three.
Got it.
Snow days. And it's only after three that we would do remote work.
Got it.
I'm just curious what the hours are for.
Our total hours.
Meaning, but the day looks like in terms of start and end.
Length of day?
Yeah.
We start at nine.
Officially 9:07 to 3:25.
Thanks. Weird times.
Yeah, so I have to look for backup on that one.
It's what I got.
Okay, the other question I have is related to the Conway schedule.
Sure.
I'll ask that after we deal with this.
Sure.
Take a motion to approve the calendar? And it has been run by the association?
It has been run by the administrators and the association and all of the association, every single one from Freedom, Tamworth, Madison and all the administrators, this is the calendar that they liked after several drafts.
All right. I will take a motion to approve. Motion by Jeremy, second by Ed. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed or opposed? Carrie's.
Thank you very much.
My question is, I'm sorry, this might put you on the spot. I know SAU nine is doing early releases.
Basically.
To do professional development. How is that affecting our cost of transportation?
Yes, so if you're not familiar, the calendar that was shared has early release days, I believe it's twice a month next year for Kennet, the entire school district. So we are investigating right now if there's going to be any additional costs for transportation because that could be additional runs. And you don't have to worry about that here in Madison, but for Freedom, for example, that would put our bus drivers into overtime so, to do that. So we're going to, we've alerted Butler and we're having those conversations right now, but that is, that could be a, an added cost that we did not expect.
So is that twice a month, every month?
Yeah, I believe it adds up to about 14, and then there's some that have, there's a few that have additional, like a.
Like parent conference.
Parent-teacher conference, there's a day that they also have a PLC. So I want to say it's 16 to 17 days.
Okay. I just know that sometimes throws our transportation off because it gets them here earlier and then it's, so I don't know how Butler's going to.
Yeah.
Right, because right now it's a back-to-back. They do go do the afternoon run at Kennet and then they come and do our afternoon run. So now you're talking a potential two-hour window.
Gap in the middle.
Yeah.
Okay. Just something I thought of.
I'm glad you asked because we are investigating that and we'll keep you updated on.
I also, as an SAU nine parent, will say it hasn't been communicated out, that calendar. So I am curious how it's going to impact just families for that. And especially, I mean, that's Madison families sending to the middle school or high school, you know, in transportation and, you know, getting out early to get your kid or, you know, availability, that kind of thing is another piece that has not been communicated out.
I know it's been approved because I had to, I wanted to wait until SAU nine had an approved calendar because we try to align as much as possible. So I feel good about sharing that fact, but I don't know, I can't speak to the.
No, but I just, I feel like as a parent, it's disappointing to not have communication from the SEU office saying, hey, this is happening. Here's how we're going to cover it. Here's what we're going to do, like be prepared. Because we do have parents that, you know, may not feel comfortable with their kid being home, especially elementary, middle school.
I have had a couple of parents that have reached out about their concern with the schedule and asking if that was, you know, in Tamworth, Madison, Freedom, parents from each district saying, is that something we're doing here? They were relieved to know that we were not.
All right, extended school year dates?
Extended school year. So extended school year is starting on July 7th through July 30th, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday from 9:00 to 12:00. And I'm sorry to report that we will not have Laura Foundation this year. They're not offering Laura Foundation.
Oh, really? Kids enjoyed that.
They did.
Okay. This could be a long.
I will try to make this as painless as possible. So some legislative updates. There have been a number of bills this season that have implications for public education. Some of those have been moved to inexpedient to legislate, so essentially they're put on hold or basically, you know, gone to limbo. The ones that are still on the table right now that could have effects for us and we'll wait, as I said, it's still somewhat early, is the universal Freedom accounts. So there's something, there'd be no parameters around your eligibility for Freedom accounts. There's some bills discussed and then, so this is a mixture of budgetary implications and structural implications, kind of what I want to give the two overarching themes. There's a bill on there about not teaching communism. SB 297 is a bill that Heather and I have been tracking. This is a big one. If you read the Sun, there are some big implications for health insurance, the way that entities are, whether you're self-insured or whether you have a.
A risk pool.
A risk pool, thank you Heather. Could have big implications for how school districts are paying for health insurance. So we're fortunate that we're with School Care and Heather's been tracking this bill heavily and I've been pestering her about it nonstop, so feel free to jump in at any point Heather. But we're in good shape. The one that, you may have read that SAU nine uses Health Trust. Health Trust because of the way they're pooled could be, could be substantial implications. I believe the Sun quoted that at about, you know, 20 to 30%. And there's some districts that are up there at 60, 40, 60%. So that has big, big, big implications.
So don't we use Health Trust?
We use them for dental. We use them for.
Life and disability.
Life and disability.
So that's, okay, so not for the Health.
We're pretty, our risk is pretty, is managed pretty well. Those aren't big-ticket policies. So we're continuing to monitor that and if we need to shop, we certainly are, you know, Heather's been kind of kicking the tires there a little bit. We need to work through with that with our various associations as well, but given the implications, if we can come up with something comparable, I think that they would be in agreement to, I'm optimistic about that.
Did you say that this 40 to 60%?
Increase.
Increase. Okay.
So that's, if you want more information, it's SB 297.
297, okay.
So that's the one that has the biggest financial implications right now. There's some others out there right now that have to do with restraint and seclusion, biological sex for sports teams that luckily at the middle school level, that doesn't affect us as much as it would the high school. Cell phone policies that would put, you know, ban basically cell phones in schools, you know, I'm being a little, I'm painting with a broad brush.
Right, no.
Budget caps is another one that could have some, school district budget caps is another one that's on the table right now.
That one's a little scary.
It is.
Like how it reads or?
Right, I mean, it's in a lot of discussion, but there's potential for a district like Madison that tuitions out kids like to middle school, high school, where we don't have any control over those costs. We get our bill and that's what we budget for. And then you put a tax cap on with it, you can shrink from both sides of your budget so that you have next to nothing for your actual programs.
So the budget cap would not eliminate like our tuition contract?
Right.
Like a default would.
Right.
It would include.
Right.
Right. So those are some of the bigger ones that are out there right now that we're, you know, continuing to keep an eye on.
Okay.
Trying to, meals, there's, I wanted to mention that one. There's a bill out there that would, school districts would provide meals to all, all students free. So that's another one that's out there.
Paid for by.
Yeah, yeah, some of those unfunded mandates. I believe the state would be chipping in at what rate? And a lot of these are early in the.
Ten cents a meal.
Yeah, you've got it, right, right. Transportation for, mandated transportation for kindergarten. I'm happy to say some of these things, we already do that, so there's, you know, some districts that don't. And it ranges from things like SB 297 to a commission to study the state flag, so they're all over the place.
I had a question. So the one on cell phones, like I thought they were banned in our high school. They're not. Or, so I guess my question is, would that be something that just decides for the whole state, no matter what school you're in?
Correct.
So your school doesn't get to do it?
Right, so that, compared to a local policy, this would be a House bill that would move that forward that I know Governor Ayotte is looking into that. And we've done some book studies at our level, looking at anxious generation and how cell phones can impact student learning and behavior management and all those things. So, but we're, but to your point, right, at the high school level right now, my understanding is that there is, they're really cracking down on cell phones, but this would give some teeth, if you will, at the law.
So this is all incorporated in State Bill 297? All this?
No, no, 297 was just that insurance piece.
Okay, I'm sorry.
These all have different proposed.
All right. Sorry, I got confused.
Bills I didn't have.
You had sent to me the low.
Yes.
Joint Board.
Yes.
Listen, maybe if you keep that rolling.
I can give an updated one.
On websites.
Yep, I can give an updated one.
Push it to the website, that way everybody can see what it is. Because I think there's a bunch and I think there's a lot of uncertainty right now.
Yes.
Everywhere about, you know, the Federal Department of Education, the State Department of Education, you know, what do we lose if this gets shut down? What do we, what don't we lose? You know, I mean, I think those questions are, I know I have them and I've asked you some of those, but I think others are going to have those questions as well. And, you know, how does, you know, I know our adequacy money is going down every year.
Every other.
Every other, thank you. But, you know, things are changing rapidly and just try to keep our heads on top of it is hard, so.
Yeah, yeah, the insurance piece is always a perpetual issue. This certainly, it fast.
Exacerbates it?
Yes.
To some extent.
Yes.
Other questions regarding legislative updates?
And if there's anything that you hear or want more additional guidance on, I'm happy to use my sources and dig deeper into certain bills if there's any questions.
Okay. School achievement data, I'm assuming now that you handed it out?
Yes, I did hand it out. I have a couple extra if that wasn't, I apologize, it didn't make the packet, but there's a couple extras here if anyone would like those.
This is on testing or?
Yes, this is our benchmarking data. So what you have in front of you, and it's a little hard to see, but what you'll see in that column there, it's broken out into boxes, less than proficient, proficient, and that'll give you the according test. So we're looking at our math and reading assessments. So just a little background, I apologize if folks are already versed in this, but just to get, make sure everyone's on the same page is that throughout the school year, we use benchmarking data. We use STAR 360 through Renaissance. And this is from our winter benchmark. We benchmark in the fall, winter and spring. This assessment is used internally as opposed to the SAS test, which is administered in the spring, which is all based on a criterion-based assessment. This is more a norm-based assessment, which you're evaluating on how your peers do, so to speak. It's adaptive, so it will change based on how well you do. So if I'm taking this test and I, you know, get three questions wrong, it's going to move me to the right size me as far as where those questions I need to be taking, what grade level I need to be taking them. So part of having this data here is, I know that we wanted to have some conversation. Number one, I think it's important that we're talking about our benchmarking. We do a larger view of data once we have our SAS information, but I think it's always important that we don't just look at data one time a year in, say, November, October, but we're keeping an eye on things. So you kind of have an aggregated look at how our students are doing in grades K through six. It's broken out into less than proficient and proficient. And within those categories, you also have below proficient, approaching proficient, proficient, above proficient. Those are the four domains that students would get on the SAS test as well. So it's kind of a predictor that if this is how the student is scoring here, you can predict that that's how they may score on the state assessment. So with all that said, I'm taking a look at, you know, just briefly here, we have some, definitely some highlights here in grade four at the above proficient here in mathematics, 45% of our students. I think that's a great, a great score here. And then looking at where we are with cusp students. And when I talk about cusp students, I look at those students that are approaching proficient and proficient because those students can swing either, either way of that midway point. One of the things that we've been working as an administrative team is really talking about going into test season here, how we can pump up our students that are on the cusp. So looking at students that are on the cusp of, you know, five, you know, five points, either you just missed proficiency or you're making proficiency because those are the students that really can, you know, whether they have a good breakfast or they're, you know, just given, hey, go get them, that can make a big difference. So we're really looking at those pieces. And then when we're looking at, and I'll open this up to questions and feedback, and then looking at reading, our grade six students with 44% of the proficient rate and 25 above proficient, I think those are, those are excellent scores as well. So obviously, we have kind of somewhat a skewed bell curve here in some spots, which is normally what you would expect to see. And I think what we want to do, and I know the board has had some follow-up for me about how we're doing in K2, and this is a measure of, you know, hey, let's take a look at, you know, where we are. We can pull some historical data, but I thought this was a good entry point just to have some initial conversation around data. This isn't as comprehensive as a full historical look, but wanted to just kind of get everyone, it's been a little while since we've looked at this, get it on the table, and we can use this to have some conversation on this and where we want to see, where we want to go.
Questions?
I just have a general comment, it's really interesting that almost all the kids took the math and only three quarters of the kids took the reading.
Yes, so I can speak to that a little bit, and I know others will probably want to either refute what I say or add on there. So in K-1, we don't always give this the enterprise assessment because of the student's ability to read, so there's an early literacy assessment. This is just looking at the enterprise STAR 360 assessment.
And so I know in the meetings we've had in the past, people have made comments about how if everybody doesn't take the test, the score is zero, that doesn't happen.
Correct, correct.
That is just based on who takes the test, right, because this is an internal, not a state.
That's right. This is an internal measure. We utilize the STAR 360 for classroom instruction, for flexible groupings, for intervention. We utilize this for sometimes meeting, how students are doing and meeting their goals for an IEP. So it's our, it's pretty much our go-to for benchmarking and keeping an eye on how our students are doing internally.
So you may have answered this one, I was going, I apologize if I have, if you did, we can answer it later, but kindergarten students, only one took all and tended not?
That's correct. So that is, that's math, so again--
Math and reading.
Right, so, well, reading, they would do the early literacy test.
Okay.
And math, we typically don't do math until first grade, and in winter, our first grade is the first time, because they just, they don't have the skill set to kind of qualify in to take it. But we do have one kindergarten student who is participating in the first grade math this year, so that's why you have that one. Typical years, you wouldn't even see a kindergartner doing the math test, but we do have one that's in the first grade math class, so.
Didn't show up as in any of the categories, it just said that the student took it?
Yeah, I don't know why.
It didn't show up in the less than proficient, proficient?
No, it didn't.
Tested.
That's an interesting question, I can look into that, why that didn't show up. I wonder if it's a sample size where they won't, you know, if this is, I'm sure that student score was individualized and they have a score, but I think when I pull a summary sheet, it wants you to have at least a, you know, a minimum sample size.
I have a question about other schools in the district.
Sure.
Do they use STAR?
They do, we all use STAR.
Okay.
In SEU?
13, that's right.
There was mention in the minutes about discussion about DIBELS, and I know I've reached out to you before.
Yep.
Was there any thought to giving the board, because my experience is there's a lot of historical data on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any way the board could see those kind of broad sweeping?
Sure, yeah. I think what I try to do is provide, you know, obviously aggregate data, we're not getting into like classroom teach, you know, student data, but yeah, we can, we can take a look back, and I know STAR, there's, I can only go back so far, but I'm happy to show what we have available. I think DIBELS is only--
DIBELS doesn't carry--
Yeah, DIBELS doesn't carry, but STAR, I can go back with STAR.
Yeah, but typically, someone in the building keeps track of that, is my experience.
It's also an annual report, we've put all that stuff, maybe not in this year's, but last year's annual report.
Even if it's just like--
There's lots of years of data.
On target or--
Sure, we can, we can take a--
We'll be doing a school report card, our, one of our teams in school, we're looking at all data, school-wide data, and so the intent is to create a school report card by the end of this year, so it'll include that data too, so that might help to, and then that would be something we'd like to replicate every year, once we get a format down.
Do you include social-emotional stuff in that report card system?
We're doing--
And what kind of measurements would you use?
We're doing everything, so we're doing attendance, social-emotional, free and reduced lunch, number of behavior referrals for the office, suspension, so any of, we're trying to do every aspect that we can. We were even tracking to see how much time students are missing out of class, it turned out that we didn't have a lot of, we were looking for that data and it, there wasn't much, I was like, oh, well, it's good. So we stopped collecting that data because that was good, but we're looking at a variety of data points, including academics, so that we can have that well-rounded picture. So yes, that is the goal of that team.
So I guess my questions for you, Mike?
Sure, sure.
So, and we know the STAR test is high, right? So I--
The what? I missed that, sorry.
The STAR test, this is high, the STAR is known to test.
It's adaptive, so it's going to, yeah, right.
So, so there's the STAR testing, then they still do the third grade state testing?
They will, yes, that's correct, so they'll, all our students, three through eight, three through eight, three through six will take the SAS.
Okay.
Unless they've, for some reason, opted out, but for sake of argument, we're going to say--
But we had a lot less opt-out last year than previous years.
True, that's right.
And so then that, like, I don't think I saw that in the book. Where does that information kept printed? Or how to--
We can have a report, so yes, these are great questions, and we can certainly have a, typically what we do is we do put that in the book, I don't know for some, if it didn't make the book this year, it did or didn't, but typically in October or November, we have a report out on our SAS from spring, and we have a full conversation about this is how we've done. I try to get cohort information, so we're not only looking at grade levels, but we're looking at how this, these students have followed and, you know, if they're in first grade here, so they're in second grade, how they did in third grade, and have a more robust conversation. This has been, this was a request from the board to have some student achievement on, and we haven't, this isn't meant to be a full comprehensive conversation, but it's meant to be more of a primer and kind of continue that conversation and say, hey, here's what this assessment does, what would be helpful for the board to know and be aware of. We've had some conversation about, you know, the, a lot of great anecdotal and qualitative information about how K-2 is doing, and I think the board has asked, so how are we, how are we looking at, you know, from an achievement standpoint, how is K-2 doing? So that's an area that's not tested, obviously, to your point, at the state level, so looking at this may be a good way of measuring progress from an academic--
And you probably know, I can't remember, it was years and years and years ago, but we used a more hands-on, like, a computer test isn't really good for kinders, maybe even not first grade.
Sure, sure, sure.
A more hands-on, you know, and since you have small class sizes, you might have enough people available, so that, I mean, that would be interesting--
I think that's good feedback.
--to look at for, like, the real, like, hey, and then you probably will have to have some way of measuring your preschool program too.
Yes.
And maybe it was, maybe I was, I think it was kindergarten. And then my other question about this is, and we, you all just want to, you know, are really interested in how the Madison kids are doing, right? So you want to look at your data, but it would be interesting to compare data in our district--
Sure.
--from the three schools.
Sure.
To see, okay, this school has multi-age, how are these kids performing? This school, Freedom, is very, well, I guess they have multi-age too, right?
They do, that's right.
Because they're small.
Freedom, Cameron does as well, right? Tanworth--
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and then you could, like, if one school is using, and probably you're using all the, I don't know how you do it now, it's all the same programs, but, you know, if you see one school that has better data than the other, then you could use that information and share that, like, this program's really working, or I've added this addition to, you know, the math.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's a great idea, and that might be a great item for, you know, the SAU 13 Joint Board to have at one of their meetings, so we can have some, you know, some collective--
Substantive talk.
Yeah, some collective conversation.
You know, if somebody, you can grow from each other.
Yes, I think that's a fantastic idea, thank you.
Well, and I think your mission to kind of try to, like, streamline things that we all could share, I think that would be a good exercise.
This is great, this is good feedback, I appreciate it.
Other questions from Mike related to data, other data information that you want to share?
The only thing I'd be looking for, as I said, this is meant to kind of just be a primer and get our minds thinking about data and give you an idea of what the summary sheet looks like for STAR, but if they're moving forward, obviously, we kind of, we look at our, I sound like a broken record, we've looked, in the fall, we look at our SAS data, but if there's information that the board is looking for, or when you want to look at these items, let me know, and I'm happy to get those. I know Deb, you've shared a few already that I will see if I can get those ready for a couple, you know, a couple meetings from now.
Anything else for Mike? Anything else for us? All right, moving on to committee assignments. I have a list, a blank list here somewhere. Yep. George did win for moderator. Treasurer is currently vacant. We have--
Currently, we'll be vacant 7-1.
Will be vacant 7-1, thank you. So we need to, anybody out there who is interested in being the school district treasurer, please reach out to myself or Mike, and we'll get it to the board. There were seven or eight write-ins, that each got one vote, so, two of them are here in the room, three of them, four of them, I think, so, yeah, you each got write-ins for that as well. Oh, yeah. Yes, if you look at the ballots, there were, there were a lot of robust votes on there.
There you go.
Is it right there?
So if anybody's interested, please reach out, we do need someone as a school district treasurer. I do believe that the state changed things that we can actually hire, so it doesn't have to be a town resident anymore. I know it changed on the town level, because people, they were having a hard time finding people to fill positions like this. So if we can just double-check and see, because if we have to, we need somebody.
That'd be good, that must be good.
So check signing. Currently, that is Ed and I with Jeremy as a backup. I'm happy to continue doing that, time-wise, it works for me.
Check signing or manifest?
Manifest, oh, I'm sorry, that's down further, you're right. At the SAU, it's a different place, I'm on the top still. Clerk, I'll just go here, this is also a vacant position. If anybody's interested in being the school district clerk, I know Sloan did it this year, and she took extensive notes and did a line of how it works and what is needed when, so if anybody's interested there, again, reach out. Executive Secretary, that is Mike. Has been for years.
You never knew I had that.
Yes, see?
Got to read the fine print.
Put that on your resume.
Why change now?
Right, exactly, thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy, appreciate it, I owe you one, thanks.
Budget committee. So this was Sarah last year, anybody interested in jumping dead on into the budget committee this year?
Don't look at me. I will, I will do it.
I will back you up if needed, but--
Heather's going to have to explain a lot to me about the budget.
Come on over anytime.
That's fine. So manifest signing, we're back to that now. Two signers and an alternate, like I said, Ed and I have done it, with Jeremy as a backup, I'm happy to continue. Ed, does anybody else feel overly compelled?
Does it say you every other week?
Yes. Building and grounds, building and grounds was Ed and Jeremy, this really hasn't been much building and grounds.
No, but hey, it will be this year, so.
Oh, really? Okay.
I'll tell them after they volunteer.
Are you happy to continue volunteering there? If, if anybody who's not on there, or who's new to the board, would like to step into anything, jump on. Does building and grounds also include the Madison Corner Schoolhouse?
It does not.
No. No, that's owned by the town, right?
No, don't buy that.
Good try.
I tried.
Just wanted to check to make sure, so Ed, Jeremy, 9-13 Joint Board, three members, Sherry, Deb, anybody else? I've jumped into that as well, I don't know.
I'll do that.
All right, jumping back in, sweet. So Deb, Sherry, and Jeremy. CIP, I've been doing that, I'm happy to continue doing it, but if anybody feels compelled to want it, let me know. NHSBA delegate, one member, so we are, that is one meeting.
That was me, I, I'll do it, because I never have been.
Okay.
I'll go on too.
Policy, Ed and Jeremy have sat there.
That's so fun, I don't want to give it up now.
I would love to stay on that.
Are you being sarcastic?
No.
It's actually interesting.
It is.
It's painful, but it's really interesting.
I chair that committee, yeah, it's--
No, I am.
Oh, that sounds painful enough.
It is, yeah, that's why I don't love it.
I'll be honest, I am learning a lot about punctuation.
Not for me, though, I'll tell you that.
No, I am, I am.
Hey, we have, we have a local teacher now too, so we're all--
I'll be walking over your shoulder.
I am happy. Tuition, so this was myself and Sarah DiMartino. Anybody want--
I'll do it.
Sherry, you want to?
Yeah, I, I think maybe it's not appropriate for me to do it, I don't know.
I was thinking the same, just in case there were changes, but, so Sherry and Jim. Data governance.
I'll do it, if you want.
Ed was on that before.
Yep, I'll do it again.
Negotiations, I don't think it's needed, but we should leave it on there.
I'll do it.
Deb and Sherry.
Yeah, we won't have to do that for a couple of years here.
Correct, three years out. Madison Corner Schoolhouse. Deb's hands up, I saw it.
No, no, I'm talking to Sherry.
No, that hand was in the air. I saw it, did everybody else at home yet, they're coming?
Yes.
Does, would anybody feel compelled? I mean, I have, I have been sitting on it since its inception, but I've been--
You don't want to break the streak.
I'm okay breaking--
I don't think they want me on that, I'm just saying.
Okay, so I--
I got two chainsaws, I'll be on it.
Okay, maybe, maybe I'm not that bad.
It's historical.
It is, it sounds like a, it sounded like a volunteer.
No, I, I have--
Sherry, there's a spider right above your head, just get it.
Chair of the committee.
Okay, I will, I will continue on that.
I can expand myself even further.
So just so the board knows, I kind of told them this past year that I was on as an advisory role, that they can report back to me, but I may not attend every meeting. So as long as the board's okay with that, I'm okay continuing in that capacity. Is there anything else that I'm missing? No.
Was there a health and wellness one that somebody had to be on?
I don't know if there has to be a board member, is there a board member on health and wellness?
I think Sarah was.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, I was--
Health and wellness, thank you.
I didn't see that, where was that?
Wellness committee.
It wasn't, but we should have it on there, by policy, there needs to be a board member on there.
Sarah's on there.
I think I would know that.
That's an 8:11--
It was all she said.
8:00 AM?
Yeah.
What day of the week?
It's been Wednesdays lately.
Week, no, no.
I mean, it's flexible, we could change it.
Sure.
Weekly, 8:00 AM? Did you say weekly?
Oh, once a month usually.
I don't think you have to make all of them.
Well, no, but we have an exceptional wellness committee, so, you know.
Yes, one a quarter, is what I think.
I could do it only if it was on Tuesdays.
Ooh, okay, I could run that part of the wellness committee.
You could be backup.
I'll be your alternate if it doesn't work out.
All right, so Jim and Ed will tag-team the wellness committee.
All right.
I'll leave my candy bars in the car.
Two for one.
I'm sorry, but it's conflict interest for me, she's not going to tell me what to do here and--
It's not that kind of job.
Whoa, 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 no telling what to do here either. All right, is there anything I'm, we're missing here?
So Ed, you're alternate on that?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, I think we talked about school clerk and treasurer positions, staff nominations are done.
Policy.
Policy, we have one, GBEF-R and EGA-R, acceptable internet use policies. Policy. We have one, GBEF-R and EGA-R, acceptable internet use policies. So we've batted this up the road, down the road, left of the road, and up and down. Are all the changes, is that what's highlighted in yellow?
Yes.
I will take a motion to approve as a first reading. Deb, second. Ed, any discussion now?
So what's crossed out is what has been the policy, and what's in yellow is what...
Right. So this, right. So this is, Luke has been to a lot of conferences, and most of this is coming from either Luke directly or, and/or Primax. So the yellow is what's been added on to the currently existing policy. And then the top is the definition that came back from National School Board Association, rewritten by the legalese.
Other questions, concerns? Seeing none. Take a, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Carrie. Moving on, we'll see, come back next month as a second reading adoption. I just reached over to Mike for a quick second, because we had a discussion at the SAU Joint Board about a policy. He wasn't here, because this was already out.
Heather wanted to save the day, having that right here. Thank you, Heather.
Policy, DAF, which is Administration of Federal Grant Funds. Do you want to talk to him?
Yes, so this talks about, we talked about it a little bit at the Joint Board meeting. This has to do with time and effort requirements. It has a provision in there for addressing learning loss. So having conversations around the data we just talked about. There was another one on there for...
...for federally funded construction projects.
So the Davis Bacon wages was something that needed to go into, into policy as well. So those were the, the pieces when we were audited, that we need to have in that policy that wasn't there prior, so.
And at the Joint Board meeting, we had a discussion about it, that it would go back to each board, and rather than following the entire process of first reading and then second reading adoption, that it would be in all of our best interests to fast-track that to an adoption.
So I, yes, so I'm recommending if the board is willing to, to waive first read and approve it on the second read, that the, the, we've already submitted that that's our plan, our corrective action plan, and we've done that. So we're asking if the board feels like they'd be willing to do that, it'd be very appreciated.
Anybody else? You have from the Joint Board?
Sometimes we do this from time to time, if there's a, you know, pressing policy that we need to get in place. And quite honestly, Jeremy, Ed, we've, we've looked at policy DAF probably five times in the past, you know, so it changes all the time. So this is nothing mind-blowing with DAF. This happens all the time.
And there was some discussion around the federal level changes to the Department of Education, also affecting this at some point too.
That's right.
So it could be, have to be changed again.
Yes.
So I will accept the motion to, accept the DAF as a, as a second read adoption tonight. Motion by Ed, second. By Jeremy. Any other discussion related to that? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Carrie. Thank you very much. Grant assurances.
Yes. So what you have in front of you is the grant assurances for 2026. This is something we do annually. It's like, now I'm selling you a car, you get to initial on each page. There'll be no credit check, so, you know, good. So I need the board to authorize Jim to sign the grant assurances, so we can get our money from the federal government.
We won't know how much we're getting until July, maybe later.
That's right. That's right.
So motion to...
Flip.
That is correct. Motion to approve to sign the general assurances for 2026. Motion by Jeremy, second by Sherry. Any other discussion?
Jim, all business.
I don't know how to...
Scholarship Committee.
There we go. I need to know what that is. Very least, so you're good.
She's like, somebody's in my computer!
Okay, now, now I'm cut off. Messed up here. Who motioned this motion?
Jeremy, second by Sherry. And did I call the board? I'm not sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Carrie. Okay, we'll take care of that.
Great. Thank you.
All business. Scholarship. Updates, anything?
You need a committee. That's why it's on there, of who's going to read that.
Yes, you're right, you're right. We do need a committee. Right now, it's gone to, Ken, I haven't heard any updates as far as where we are with that, but we do need a committee to review applicants, because that could add onto this board.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
At least two for the committee?
And I'm happy to, I'd like to, honestly.
I'll do it as well, unless anybody else, like, really wants it.
All right. So Jim and Sherry will be scholarship.
Scholarship. We'll reach out to see where, how many applicants we have, just to give an update.
Oh, and Mike will too.
Now, that'll be good. That's actually the best committee to be on. That, that'll be a fun one.
They typically send me the applications.
Oh, good.
So that I will... No, it's too soon.
But I'll let them down too.
Fantastic, thank you.
Is that? Yes, you're going to have, you may possibly let somebody down. Are you able to do that?
I know.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, that's a good, that'll be a good one.
That's all. So motion to go back in.
I got one thing.
Go ahead.
Just what I recognize, Sarah DiMartino for four years.
Yes.
On the board.
Yep.
Say, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
And I actually, did you get a number on that for me?
No, but I will.
So usually we buy, we get a bowl engraved. And I asked Heather yesterday to find a price for, late last night. So we'll get that and get it.
It's less than 100. It's usually like between 50 and 75, so I'll get it ordered.
As a general, okay. Perfect. All right. Thank you, Ed. Motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A for negotiations purposes. Jeremy, Sherry, Jeremy, yes. Sherry, yes. Deb, yes. Ed, yes. Jim, yes. Yes.
You got to repeat who made the motion.
Jeremy and Sherry.
It's Sherry. I apologize.
Yep. We're off. So...
Do you want to move, just turn it up?
See that if it's easy enough.